We are streaming live. I see that.
Are we?
It sounds like mine.
I got it. There we go.
Of course, I don't see anybody but me.
Oh, I don't know.
Me, you.
We're all here.
I've got Katie, Susan, and Kelly, Paul, nobody else.
I got my COVID beard going. Best one I've had in a long time.
Looks good.
Told Ramona, my wife, that I'm getting ready for being Santa Claus next year, and she don't like that idea, but anyhow.
Pretty soon, you can just push it up to the top.
Yeah, I thought about doing a comb over.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, we're gonna get into the mayor's state of the city. If you want to go ahead and take off right now, Mayor, we'll let you go.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, and welcome to everybody, especially all you that are tuning in here on St. Patrick's Day. And God bless our, I see a lot of green on the screen with our council. So it's a little rough when, when, when the meeting day falls on St. Patrick's Day. I want you to know I'm half Scottish and half Irish, although I should have the green on, but I don't. But I found out today that St. Patrick was born in Scotland. So that kind of unifies it for me and my family. Well, we have, I have, this is the first state of the city that, that I've done since I've been mayor. And I don't know if we did it somewhat sporadically in the past, but I thought enough had happened that we should try to, to capsulize it and bring the public up to speed on it. And here we go. We will be presenting the 2021 budget for adoption at this evening's council meeting. With that in mind, we'd like to provide an overview of New Franklin's finances, a review of projects completed and pending, and a brief review of activities within the various departments in the city. Regarding finances, as a result of prudent fiscal policies and effective allocation of CARES funds, we entered 2021 with a carryover in excess of $6 million, the best the city has ever enjoyed.
Good job.
Although revenue projections remain favorable for the coming year, we will continue to exercise caution in the allocation of funds while effectively meeting the current and future needs of the residents. We are in the somewhat unique position of being a city with no debt. We will continue the pay-as-you-go practice by proceeding with equipment purchases which were delayed last year. And for the first time, spending close to $1 million for street paving projects. We have been conservative in the revenue projections for our 2021 budget. We are confident we can meet the city's needs while maintaining a carryover similar to the level at which we entered this year. Projects completed and pending. Policy manual ordinances and information. During the past three years, we have made significant progress in a number of areas. Internally, we drafted and adopted the first City of New Franklin policy manual, which provides the framework for all employment-related issues. We also created a Facebook page to improve citizen access to information and added daily posts from the mayor on our website featuring current events, activities, and opportunities in the city. We are also pleased to announce that today, an index and inventory of all ordinances adopted by the city since its inception in 2006 was posted on our website and is now available to the public. And I want to thank Councilman Federman for giving us an extra nudge on that one. And I also want to thank Katie Smith for her hard work and putting that together. Dispatch. Three years ago, the state of Ohio announced significant additional requirements for the operation of dispatch centers. New Franklin has always been a primary center, meaning calls received by the dispatcher are immediately directed to either police or fire EMS as opposed to secondary centers where the calls go from one dispatch center to another and then to the safety forces, which can result in life-threatening delays. To address the additional expense while still remaining a primary center, discussions were initiated with the City of Green for formation of a joint dispatch center to improve service while sharing expenses. The result was the formation of the South Summit Council of Governments for purposes of creating the South Summit Dispatch Center. We now expect to go live at that center on May 11th of this year. In the Service Department, construction was completed last year on the long-awaited service garage, which not only houses vehicles which were being stored outdoors, but also significantly upgraded the locker and break rooms for the Service Department employees and the administrative offices. We were able to add a part-time administrative assistant to address clerical and citizen contact concerns. We hope to make that a full-time position this year and add a much-needed additional full-time employee to the department crew as well. Regarding recreation, the city purchased the Grill School property from the Norton Board of Education two years ago and dedicated the land as Grill Park, assuring that this land would not be developed, but instead represents the first New Franklin park on the west side of the city. We also made significant capital improvements to the New Franklin Tudor House, replacing cracked concrete and a dilapidated garage, taking up carpet, refinishing classic wood flooring, and giving the kitchen areas a much-needed facelift. We revived community activities at the Tudor House, including a clam bake, Christmas open house, and Oktoberfest, and Old Fashioned Fourth of July, and Movies on the Lawn. These events were enjoyed by thousands of residents and are now part of an annual calendar of city events at the Tudor House. In addition, we were able to secure four acres of adjoining lakefront land from ODNR without cost to the city for future recreational opportunities. To maximize the potential for the property and to provide for additional community activities, the city is considering a management agreement that will preserve ownership and access rights while relieving the city of the administrative, maintenance, and capital improvement expenses. Regarding infrastructure, the lack of sewer, water, and a major highway in the city have always been obstacles to attracting and retaining commercial investment. While we are dedicated to preserving the rural character valued by our residents, some controlled growth will be necessary to assure sufficient revenue for the current level of city services and to address some of the needs not currently being met. The city has finally been able to secure water to State Route 93, one of the few viable areas for commercial development in the city. This $4.1 million project is without cost or obligation to the city or its residents, but does meet the immediate needs of 13 commercial entities who have already declared their intention to tie into the water lines. Sewer will also come to this area with construction expected to begin in late 2022, early 2023. So two years from now, we will be able to provide both sewer and water to one of our commercial corridors for the first time in the history of the City of New Franklin. Regarding roads and bridges, for years, due to financial constraint, the city has been utilizing the chip-and-seal method in attempting to adequately maintain the roads. It is acknowledged that paving is far superior but much more expensive. To get an objective view of our road conditions, we engaged a consultant to inventory all of our roads and prepare pavement condition ratings, prioritizing the roads that present the most pressing need. As a result of that study and based on our current financial situation, the city has put out bids for what will likely be a million-dollar paving project this year. The city also maintains an inventory of 30 bridges in addition to culverts, which measure just short of the 10-foot requirement for classification as a bridge. Three of these caused special concern in the last two years. A culvert pipe on State Route 93 near Occasion's Party Center collapsed in June 2019. With the assistance of grants from Ohio Public Works, we were able to complete engineering, design, and construction all within 10 days so that this important thoroughfare could be reopened for our citizens. That same year, the Cundell Road Bridge at our northern border with Norton collapsed, and the Benner Road Bridge at our southern border with Lawrence Township was closed as unsafe to travel. The Cundell Road Bridge is in Norton. We have lobbied extensively and reached out to all available resources to encourage and expedite reopening. Most recently, we have received support from State Senator Christina Rogner, who has included a request for funding in this year's capital budget, and we should know the answer on that soon. In any event, we will continue to press on until that bridge is repaired and the road reopened. The Benner Road Bridge is in New Franklin and is therefore our responsibility. We applied for and received an $861,000 grant from the Ohio Municipal Bridge Program towards this million-dollar project, and we have a grant application pending with Ohio Public Works for an additional $77,000. Construction will be completed, and this bridge will be reopened by the fall of this year. Regarding department activities, the Fire Department continues to function at a high level under the leadership of Chief Steve Leslie and Assistant Chief Tim Young. The department has recently been commended for several critical rescues and responses. The Fire Department has consistently stayed within budget while attracting hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants, most recently a $500,000 grant for a new engine. It should also be noted that the firefighter paramedics have worked bravely and unselfishly without fanfare as frontline workers during the COVID pandemic. In the Police Department, they have likewise been singled out for a claim and commendation for their part in successful investigations and prosecutions while continuing to perform all of the community policing activities that provide structure for our young people and security for our seniors. Led by Chief Dan Davidson and Captain Dan Bickett, our Police Department is highly regarded and well-respected in Summit County and throughout northeast Ohio. As with the Fire Department, our police have likewise been faithful frontline first responders during the pandemic. In the Service Department, in becoming a city 15 years ago, the mileage of roads for which we are responsible nearly doubled, including responsibility for additional culvert pipes and bridges in addition to the existing stormwater issues, all without any significant increase to our workforce. Despite these additional burdens, your Service Department, under the direction of Assistant Service Director Brian Kepler and Deputy Road Superintendent Dale Corley, have performed admirably. Long and countless hours have been spent keeping the roads clear in the winter months. To assist in that regard, we upgraded our options by purchasing a brine production assembly and the equipment necessary to dispense the brine. Additional trucks were also purchased three years ago to meet the task of plowing and salting roads that Summit County once serviced. The Service Department remains responsive to weather emergencies while also assisting residents with ditch enclosures, stormwater problems, and other emergency needs. The department is also closely monitoring the water project to address construction issues as they arise and assure proper restoration of areas where residents' property has been disturbed. In Parks and Recreation, in addition to the acquisition of Grill Park and the expansion of activities and opportunities at the Tudor House, the city has made significant improvements to the baseball, softball, football, soccer complexes at Lockard Field and Sisler Park, focusing most recently on parking and field drainage issues. We will also open our first pickleball court at Lakeside Park in April. Due to the expressed interest in pickleball and the absence of tennis courts in New Franklin, despite the fact they were included in the original plans for Sisler Field, we are now proceeding with planning for the installation of six tennis courts and four pickleball courts at the Sisler complex. We will be applying for a grant from ODNR to assist with funding and will rely on the funds dedicated by our charter to the parks from the income tax to finance the balance. If all goes well, the courts could be operational by next spring. We have also obtained a grant from the Ohio and Erie Canalway Association for planning of an all-purpose trail that would connect the Portage Lake State Park to the Ohio and Erie Canalway towpath, and these, we feel, are two of the jewels of New Franklin. Community involvement, perhaps the most important accomplishment in the past three years, has been the opportunity for citizens to participate in the consideration and planning of issues and activities which affect the quality of life in New Franklin. With our Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board, there was already a rich tradition of community involvement in our local government, but that was just the beginning. Two years ago, issues arose regarding the discharge of firearms. In response, we formed the Community Firearms Committee. Twenty residents met, discussed, and eventually presented recommendations for legislation to City Council. When COVID-19 reared its head, folks in the city were in need of a variety of services. In response, the New Franklin Volunteers Association was formed, and the members have provided services and support to numerous residents. At the Tudor House, a board that once numbered six or seven people now boasts 28 members with subcommittees formed for the House, the grounds, and events. Another six residents joined the Tudor House Garden Society to oversee and implement a beautification program for the gardens. Most recently, as work on the water project began and talk of development arose, the Citizens Advisory Group was formed. Twenty-five residents attended the organizational meeting last month. An immediate result was the decision to proceed with an update of our comprehensive development plan, which was originally adopted in 2004. This group will continue to meet and discuss plans for controlled development in the city. The New Franklin Nets Committee has been formed and will meet next week to provide input and guidance on the tennis pickleball courts project. And a Grill Park Committee is currently being formed for input from west side residents on the best uses of that park. As you can see, volunteerism is alive and well in New Franklin. The COVID-19 pandemic created a host of challenges for city administration and all departments. From live streaming, streaming meetings to developing work-from-home protocols, hotspots for those without broadband, holiday assistance to families, food boxes for those in need, strict adherence to public health guidelines for our employees, all of whom were classified as essential workers. The list goes on and on. It will long be remembered that all departments responded admirably, and as a result, the residents suffered no interruption in services. With light finally glimmering at the end of the tunnel, we will continue to take all steps necessary to successfully see this through to the end. In conclusion, all systems are functioning well as we move into 2021 and beyond. In the past two years, we secured grants, land transfers, and contractual benefits in excess of $8 million for the city. Our Finance Director has guided us in preparation of a $17 million budget and obtained yet another clean audit from the previous audit year. We are blessed with a talented, active, and engaged city council whose members have provided guidance and support throughout all these ventures. The partnership between council, the administration, the various city departments, and the citizens is real, and it is strong. We are truly blessed. Moving forward, we will continue to do all things necessary to enrich the quality of life in New Franklin, maintain and improve the current level of services, and preserve the rural character we all hold so dear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks for the kind words. As a city council member, I know we don't always agree on everything, but I think we're all here for the best of our citizens, so. And you're doing a great job, and I know we all appreciate that. So that being said, we'll move into our committee meetings this evening, which tonight we have six first readings and one second reading. We're gonna move into finance. Jim, go ahead and start your finance committee.
Thank you. We will open Finance Committee at 6:20. Our first resolution is Resolution 21R17, a resolution approving and adopting the 2021 Annual Operating and Appropriation Budget for the General Fund and all other funds for the City of New Franklin, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. The appropriations budget needs to be approved at this meeting, so it could take effect on April 1st. Questions, comments?
I have none.
Anybody wish to take time on this?
No, I think we're good.
Then we will move to wave the three readings on this resolution. Second one is Resolution 21R18, a resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Southeast Security for security measures at the New Franklin Fire Police Administration Buildings and the South Summit Dispatch Center, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Mr. Mayor, are you going to jump on this one?
Yeah, and I brought, we brought Captain Bickett along as well if there's any questions, but the short story on this is that we knew there were going to be setup issues, transitional issues that were going to come up as we moved physically the dispatch department over to Green. And some of those involved security in the sense that our dispatch here monitors the cameras here. There's 16 of them that they monitor on a continual basis. In addition, when people come late in the evening after hours, if they need buzzed in to the police or the fire station, dispatch takes care of those things. And we will not have anybody in the building for that purpose once we move everybody up there to Green. So this is one that kind of came at us, well, all I'm saying is there's a lot of, a lot of loose ends to tie up for this dispatch. And Captain Bicken did a nice job of engaging Spiro from Rostowski from Southeast to discuss with us what it was going to take, the technology, from the technology and to do what we need to do. And in essence, it's, it's going to be a matter of a new server. Well, I'll let Dan help. Captain Bickett helps us in a minute. But we need, there's equipment that's going to have to be installed, monitor that's going to have to be installed up at Green. There'll be a server here in the dispatch center. We, we're going to need squawk boxes and intercom at the, at the fire door and the police door. And all of this, and some additional software, all of which translates to the proposal that you have, an amount of $24,451. We did not, it's under the amount that we, we're not required to get a bid on this. Normally, we probably would have got some additional pricing. On the other hand, we've done business with Southeast, and they're familiar with our system. They're also familiar with the software system Green uses, so. And time is short because we're trying to get, we want to be up and running May 11th. If we approve this tonight, it'll probably, it'll be April 1st or so before they're ready to work on, get busy with the installation and get the parts and all those kinds of things. And it'll, and that'll give us 30 days to get that done by at least May 1st, so we can test drive it before May 11th. So Captain Bickett, I, you know, we'll, we'll kick it into anything that, well, one thing I do want to add is this. The estimate that you have, the proposal that you have includes everything but the intercoms at the two, at the fire door and the police door. They're going to be about, I just printed it out, about an additional $3,000. That will come under, there'll be a separate invoice for that one. We won't, we won't need council approval for that, but I want you to know that the total is going to be about $28,000. And the last thing I'll say on this is, when we budgeted all this, we did know that, that we were going to have these kind of expenses for transition. So this isn't a surprise, and it's, it's in the budget. Anything I missed? Captain Bickett?
Um, no, really, just that it's, there's not too much of an option here, because the system we have is an analog system, and it was never designed to be streamed to another room or another building. So this new system with the server allows it to be streamed, so they can watch it from the new dispatch center. The new system will allow us to have 64 cameras if we ever need that many. And I guess the expandability to, if we want to monitor a different fire station that's not here at 5611 Park, there's Wi-Fi cameras that we can set up that we could actually stream into this system also, so there's some compatibility things with, you know, some other options. That's really about it. This is the same software system that Green currently uses, so as far as training dispatchers how to use it, they're dispatchers that are going to be now our dispatchers. Already, already know how to do it, so it's all one system over there. I think it'll be, it'll be good to be together like that.
Thank you.
And so, real quick, with this, this is all on us. It's not a split cost because it affects just us.
Right.
Okay. And then with all the available cameras, do we currently, or will we be able to, or do we want to include the Service Department and being able to monitor the building there 24 hours?
Yeah, I mean, that would be an option based on what I've learned about the system. I don't know if they want to hardwire a new server there and upload it to the dispatch center or put the Wi-Fi cameras up there. I just don't know, you know, what the best option there would be, but it's definitely an option. Yep.
Mr. Cotts, I think you're, you're on the thread. I mean, I think that's the future. We, Green monitors not only what we monitor, but they monitor a number of their parks and probably their service, and so I think that that's something we'll certainly grow into.
Okay, super. And this, and this system has that capability, as you mentioned, of the, I think you said 56 cameras or something.
64.
64?
Yeah.
Well, I missed eight. I'm sorry.
He's about 32 now, so about, it doubles our capacity.
Yeah, okay. And again, as Mr. Adamson mentioned, this is something that needs to move along pretty quickly. We're, May 11th is our go-live date, and that's going to be here very quickly before we know it. So any other questions or comments about this? And I believe everybody's on board to wave the three readings on this.
Yeah.
And that's what we'll do. Thank you. Thank you, everybody that participated. Next, we have Resolution 21R19, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with Atlantic Emergency Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Pumper Truck for the Fire Department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is, as we talked about, and the mayor mentioned in his State of the City report, the grant that we received for this, the truck is $557,000, 386 also. That will, our part of that is $27,862, so for less than $30,000, we're getting a brand-new pumper truck, a half-million-dollar truck, and it's fantastic, it's fantastic that Fire Department worked so hard to get this grant to us and, and that we're able to take advantage of, we're in a position to take advantage of it. We have Assistant Chief Young here to provide any comments or information. And real quick, before you get into, to whatever you want to share with us, are there going to be any additional costs with this truck, or will this truck come in ready to, to roll day one?
No, there, there will be additional costs, like radios and some minor handles. We will be, it'll be taking the place of our 37-year-old truck right now. So we're going to salvage as much equipment as, as possible off of that truck, but there will be some, you know, handles, things like that that we'll have to purchase, but we've had that planned, and we haven't budgeted, so. And nothing unexpected. It's just an amazing opportunity that we've got now the second time, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's truly been a blessing for us.
Absolutely, and again, congratulations. I'm sorry.
We may, I, I guess I'll ask to amend, because I called this, I don't know where I picked it up, an enforcer, but it's actually a saber, so that's the, the name of the model.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
So this is a Pierce Saber. Is that S-A-B-E-R, S-A-B-R-E?
No, S-A-B-E-R, Saber.
Okay, you got that, Kelly?
I have it.
All right.
So is that our, our other truck that we're replacing? Is that something we'll just put on our auction, or is that?
Well, actually, we're looking at the possibility. Chief Leslie had me get a value on it. We're looking at possibly working some type of a deal with the University of Akron, their training center. In combination, if we made that donation to them, in the past, we've done some trading back and forth for the ability to get in the burn building over there, so that we can do our fire training, live fire training. So because it doesn't have a tremendous value, I was, I have it here, it was like under $4,000, somewhere around in there. But that would buy us several sessions in the burn building over there that we don't have to take out of our budget that we can use for other things. So that's kind of where we're headed with that. It's not been finalized yet, but that, that is the direction we're headed. At the end of the day, if for some reason that would not work out, then yes, we would end up going. In the past, I've put vehicles on gov deals. There's several resources that we could, that we could liquidate at, and get fair market value out of it.
Yeah, well, that sounds great with the university, so yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So in the payment terms, it says if we pay 100% within 15 days, we can deduct $17,217. Do we plan to pay 100% within the 15 days to save that?
Actually, that, that wasn't a possibility, but the federal grant, they would do a portion upfront, and that would have required us to front all that money basically upfront. So that was not a possibility right from the start, because I seen that first, I was like, wow, that, that's a nice chunk of money we had a lot, you know, that would have. But I guess we're, at the end of the day, we're, we're real happy that we're getting what we are at that point.
Right. All right, for sure. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions? Again, congratulations to the Fire Department and everyone that was involved in, in going after this grant and making it happen for us. And, and it's, it's a huge bonus for the city. Any city would be extremely excited to have this opportunity, so. And as you mentioned, it's a 37-year-old truck that we're replacing, so excellent. So if there isn't any concerns, we'll ask to wave the three on this. And this truck, you know, even though it's just a little, little thing, won't be ready until maybe the first year.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're right up against it. We're pushing. Hopefully, it'll be late December, but he said it could be first, so. Yeah, we're yeah, we're right up against it. We're pushing. Hopefully, it'll be late December, but he said it could be first, so.
Okay, all right, super. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Then we move on to Resolution twenty one R twenty, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into agreement with Tim Lowly Chevrolet for a twenty twenty one Chevrolet Tahoe four by four vehicle for the fire department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately. Oh, we get a bumper truck and now we need a new four by four. Tell us all about that, Assistant Chief Young.
Okay, I sure will. We had in our five year capital plan to replace. It's basically the ship commander's vehicle. It's a command vehicle that carries our platform for all setting up for incidents. That it's it. This will take the place of a twenty eleven Ford that we currently use and it's Ohio winters have worked on rather well. We originally had this scheduled for next year, but because we were fortunate enough to get the truck and we have the funds, the chief and I got together with Susan and Mayor and said, would it be possible? Would you be able to back this or support this that we could move this ahead? Because I checked with Tim Lowly. I spoke with Captain Bickett and they have it set up. It's through the state bid, so it's a pretty clean process. It makes it nice and it's actually a very good deal for a Tahoe. And so they said, yes, absolutely. It made good sense. It was well within our budget. And so therefore, here I sit before you saying we would like to get a Tahoe, please.
So so this is priced at thirty seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars and it's below below the state bid pricing on it. So we're again saving money and and this is one of the advantage of the police department setting up a good relationship with with Tim Lowly. We've used them a few times in the past. And so so they're certainly working with us, with our police department and now fire. So we we do appreciate that for the people up there. And this truck is coming with a lot of stuff already installed, so.
No, actually, just one correction slight because we are the the light packages and things like that are geared towards police. They did have some available for fire and EMS, you know, for our purposes. But we we chose not to go with have them try to outfit it. So they will have some additional cost involved in that. Once again, we have it in our budget. We're fine there. So it will come in. It will need to be lettered and then we'll have it outfitted and the company that comes in and they've done it with our equipment before. They basically set up in our bays and they put one of the it'll be the vehicle that it's coming in for. They'll put one vehicle on one side, the new vehicle on the other, and they transfer as much as possible and and they do a very good job. We've been really happy with their work. So just slightly different than what the PD, but definitely it's the state bid program, just taking advantage of that.
So so these things that are marked on the on a price sheet, those are those are current. Those are actual. There's no change.
Yes, that is. That is what is available. And quite honestly, we didn't have a lot of choice. We had no ability to order. We were lucky enough. He had three of these and he said, here you go. And we sat down and he said, this is what you got. And so if you can make it work, make it work. So he was kind enough that that of the three of them, when I talked to him, he was down to two and said the one was there was gonna be another one gone. So he was kind enough. He did agree to put a hold on until after the tonight's meeting. So we do have one that's available for sure. So.
Okay, so it sounds like we we kind of need to move on this quickly.
If at all possible, because after tomorrow, when I contact him, if it's if we have to go to another two, you know, two weeks for a reading, there's a good chance it won't be available at that time.
Okay. Questions, comments, folks?
Well, I'm a Ford guy, but I'm okay with it.
My only comment is I'm jealous that we can get a Tahoe for that price and I.
Yeah, I hear you.
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll ask to wave the three readings on on that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And then we move on to Resolution twenty one R twenty one, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds towards New Franklin Sheriff, the cost for formation and operation of the South Summit Dispatch Center by the South Summit Council of Governments and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this we've we've already done in the past, and this is continuation. We approved a hundred thousand before and we have another hundred thousand that we're we're going, but our share of that hundred thousand is forty thousand eight hundred dollars. So this is again, just getting it going and you know, the money that we knew was coming, that's budgeted and questions, comments, anybody?
No.
We'll ask to wave the three on this. And we will conclude the Finance Committee meeting at six thirty eight. Thank you, everybody for attending.
All right, thank you, Jim. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the Laws and Ordinance Committee at. Let me give me a time real quick.
Six thirty eight. I just mentioned it.
Thirty eight. I just jumped off of Facebook to get to that. Okay, thank you. I we have all members present. Andrea is excused this evening. We have ordinance number twenty one dash O dash zero one, an ordinance to increase the salary of the mayor of New Franklin to ninety thousand per year, effective January first, twenty twenty one. And this opened it up for discussion at this point.
Be twenty two.
Yeah.
About twenty twenty two. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Andy. Twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I'd like to quickly clear up a couple of things that I mentioned at the last meeting regarding this. Might have been a little bit of confusion, mostly on my part, but yeah. And and I appreciate former Mayor Bolus calling me out on this. To clarify, when we became a city in two thousand and six, the mayor's position was a part time position and was paid twelve thousand a year. In twenty ten, we made it a full time position and created a salary at seventy two thousand a year. So it's it's been seventy two thousand since the creation of the full time position.
So that's.
Anybody? Questions, comments?
No, that's okay. I was expecting a little more out of you, Jim, but I appreciate that.
I I can go on for twenty thirty minutes if you like there, David.
No, go ahead. I got all night. No. So any other comments? I would still like to keep this on time.
Yeah, I I don't mind keeping it going, but I I have received a few. I don't want to push back. I'll call it, you know.
Yeah.
And and I I don't disagree that it's it's just bad timing, but it's the timing that we have to deal with. You know, that's just where we're at. It's needed for sure. I I I don't think and I don't understand or I don't understand. I don't see where Mayor Adamson wouldn't be reelected. I mean, he's doing a fantastic job, right? And I think he deserves this this bump, but I don't. I know it's just that it's just bad timing. That's what it is. But we it has to be done at this point or another four years, right? I mean, that's just where we're at. We'll we'll never know who that next person is. We we just won't until they're in office and I don't know. I I think it's 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 overdue and I don't know. I I'm good with time on it and.
I think we could go one more reading and I agree with you a hundred percent. It it's just you're in a catch twenty two. You do, you don't. I mean, I would have gave Paul this a couple of years ago, which we couldn't have done, you know. So yeah, we're just in that catch kind of twenty two thing. You gotta either, you know, you gotta make it happen. I agree with it and I'll support it, but I just still want to get some input. I haven't got much. I seen one. I only seen one email that had some discussion about the timing of it and but the timing, we can't. We can't decide what the timing is. I mean, it's not. We're like saying, hey, we're just giving this person a raise right now. It's like the next person that gets elected to this position is gonna make ninety thousand dollars a year. And we're hoping it's Paul. I'm hoping it's Paul. I don't know how everyone else feels or somebody else that can do the job Paul's doing. You know, so that's that's my comment and how I feel about it.
If I may, I I think it's important that we take Paul out of the picture. He's 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 our current mayor, but we have to look at the position in the office of the mayor and not necessarily the individual that's in there. Obviously, he's Mayor Addison has has done a terrific job and has promoted the office and and made the office to a position where we need to look at the the salary. And if you had a a fifteen million, fifteen seventeen million a year revenue corporation, that person would be making two hundred thousand. So you know, for us, for the office of mayor, that ain't going to happen. But we we could, you know, certainly again, what what is the the expectation of the office? What what are the duties of the office? What's the time commitment of the office? And and what what is a fair compensation for the office? And if that happens to be Mayor Adamson, fantastic. If it happens to be somebody else, fantastic. But the expectation is this is the the position and this is what the fair compensation for that position for our our community is. And so.
All right. So like, I'll change the way I worded it. If we could get somebody that can perform as well as our current mayor, I'm okay with that. How's that? I left left the name out and everything, but you know.
I don't disagree. I I and I certainly don't disagree and I've I've shared that before, but I just again, just wanted make sure that we're looking at the 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 office itself and and not concentrating on on the person that's that's currently in that position.
I'm also wondering who's gonna be on that ballot for mayor after this came out. So we'll see what happens with that, too. I just in my mind, I'm not saying anything just in the back of my mind. So I gotta put it out there. I'm one of them no sense none no nonsense guys, too. But anyhow, so all right.
Has anybody else received comments or questions or that they'd like to share with us this evening?
No, I just had to want it. Maybe this wasn't the best time, but I don't think we're putting it in like giving somebody a raise right now. I had to kind of look through legislation. I'm like, what, you know, what are we talking about? We're talking about after the next election. So
Right.
And I think you guys, you know what the email I seen, but I'm just I'm not bringing up any names. And I'm like, what? I'm not sure what they're talking about. So it's not something we're doing right now. It's like who's elected next for mayor is gonna be making some more money. So.
Yeah, Mr. Talk, that that's basically what I've got as well is timing and then, well, we're just gonna hand. No, it's not. It it's, I mean, we've explained it and it's just, I mean, after two thousand and six, you know, we it's never been there, right? You know, and we've got three department heads who are making more than than the the mayor who's who they report to, which that's just not right in my book. So let's keep this going and see if we get any more comments and see what happens.
We absolutely should keep it go for a third reading and also we technically do not have to pass this until the second meeting in April. So if there's a need, we we can delay voting on it until until a fourth reading as such. So we're we're not under a time crunch and and again, we put it out early. So we have plenty of opportunity for people to give input if they desire.
Yeah, like I said, I've only seen one and only had one comment. I mean, it just the email that I'm sure we all seen. Other than that, I haven't heard anybody give me any calls or anything. So anyhow, we'll keep it on time for now. And like Jim said, we got some time.
I have one thing I want to say.
Yes.
Here. Is there is there something to look look into it instead of all right now, like in steps for even if it's for the time that he's in right now? How many years has he got left?
This one.
Yeah. Oh, that's it. He's up. Okay.
Yeah, I think I brought that up before. I don't know that you can make any kind of step in it. I don't think there's nothing in our charter that accommodates it.
That's true. Yeah, okay.
All right, anything else for committees? I think that's all our legislation. I do need to step away for a few minutes here and then we'll get our meeting started.
Can we release?
Yes, yes.
Chief Young and Captain Bickett?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Real quick, I gotta take care of this. I'll be right back.
Who's going to that? Oh, you are. I see you. Oh. Oh, time to drink. Not dirty, Judy. Looks fine.
Thank you.
You gotta watch what you do. I can see.
You can see me.
Oh, yeah. You're all the way across the whole top of me. Everybody is. So nice to be able to see everybody once.
It is, isn't it?
That's the way mine is. It shows everybody on top.
Mine doesn't. One at a time.
Oh, mine right now. You're right in the middle. Not now, you're not. You're on top.
I had a phone call. I had to return real quick. Sorry about that. Here we go. All right, everybody good? We're gonna go ahead and call the order.
We're gonna call it off.
I'm sorry, the city New Franklin. Council meeting at six forty nine. We all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, bestest of all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jim, for the flag. Appreciate that. Get a roll call, please.
Mr. Cots? Mr. Hargit?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawk?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here. And Andrea is excused this evening. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of March third, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Second, any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
All right, thank you. Like to make a motion to approve the financials for February twenty twenty one, subject to audit.
Second.
First and second, any questions, discussion on the financials? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move into our public comment. Please keep your comments addressed to council in under four minutes. All right, we have a couple of things here. All right, any word on when we can get back to in person meetings, Paul?
I mean. There's the governor has that that order is still in effect, the ten person. You see, there's a lot of lot of those directives are being rolled back, but there has not been that one has not yet. So I'm a little more optimistic. I was thinking I was thinking it'd be late summer, but I think with the face of the vaccines, I'm I'm hopeful that maybe even, you know, by June. But certainly as soon as we're able, I I think it's gonna depend on the percentage of people that are vaccinated, which I think right now is about twenty percent in the state. And then it's also going to depend on on the new cases, which Donna Skoda from Summit County Public Health reported the other day that we were getting, we were seeing six hundred to seven hundred a day not that long ago, and now it's ninety or a hundred a day. So I think as those numbers continue to go down, they'll be that that's what that's what'll trigger. You know, that's the criteria they're using and and that's that will trigger reopening, hopefully sooner rather than later.
All right, thanks, Paul. Well, I said earlier, I don't know if I was we were online and I got my first shot. I'm excited about my second one coming up April fifth. So.
David?
Yes.
May I say something, please? And I was gonna wait until the end. But a lot of a lot of people were having trouble getting on. But a lot of, a lot of people were having trouble getting online and getting to the listing for getting their shots. Now, someone told me a trick that might work and I'd like to share it with the people who don't mind. You can call the pharmacy, speak to the pharmacist and get on a waiting list in case someone can't make it and they call you at the last minute. And I've had several people that have done that and it's worked fine for them. But I'm not sure people, sometimes you get online, you go through the whole registration and then they say no appointments available. But if you call the pharmacy and speak with the pharmacist, they'll put you on a list sometimes and you can get in that way.
Yep, that's a, and actually, we were trying real hard and a good friend of mine's son said, a friend of his, his wife, she's a stay-at-home mom. And she, we gave her information on Saturday and by Sunday morning, we had shot. There's, there's people out there doing it for nothing other than
Right.
They wanna help people out. And we tried, you know, once they changed it, because I'm fifty-five, so when they went fifty, you know, we, we knew it was coming, so we just started trying. And it, we were, me and the wife were on, for hours, trying to just get somewhere online to get it. And it's, it's hard to go, it's hard to navigate to do it, you know, so.
Well, that's the reason I'm throwing that out, because most people don't realize you can talk to the pharmacist and they have a waiting list that they've already had that medication and they have to give it that day.
Yeah.
And so they just call you and if you can go right then, they get you in.
So, yeah, then there's other ways to do it, like put in a different area code for different areas. And I've heard all kinds of different things, but, yeah, it's tough and I, I, I think it'll get better, but I'm excited. I'm, I got my first one and trying to get this thing back to normal, so anyhow, so thank you, Judy. We have a great job on the state of city mayor and council. All right, and another one was how does the mayor's salary line up with other cities this size? I think we're kind of on the low end. Does anybody disagree with me on that?
It, it's kind of hard to, to determine, because cities our size could have different forms of government where you may have a mayor that's in charge of everything, such as our, our community. Or you may have a mayor that's more of a figurehead versus the actual person running things and you have a city manager. So there are different forms of government out there. But I can tell you that in Barberton, I believe, the mayor there's salaries around ninety-six thousand. Green is around a hundred fifteen, hundred twenty thousand, something like that. So, we're in line, if, as David said, possibly on the low end or definitely on the low end at this point.
All right.
If you'd like to know. I'm sorry, if you'd like to know about comparables for mayors and other positions, department heads. The Ohio Municipal League puts out every other year, they put out a salary list. It actually tells you whether the person is elected or if they're appointed, the population size, the budget, you know, things that are comparable, so you can get a better idea if you just go to the O M L web, O M L website and look for their wa- wage survey, you can pull it up.
All right, thank you, Susan. Andy, you had a comment?
You know what? I'll just, I'll keep quiet. I was just gonna say a zinger about the mayor of Norton, but you know what? It's not productive, so I'll just keep to it myself.
All right. Yeah, because sometimes, Andy, you just gotta do that. You could be outspoken like crazy, but sometimes you just gotta bite your lip. I know how it is. I'm the same way. I've been doing it a long time, so I know sometimes you just gotta just say, just best to not say it, so. All right, cool. All right, well, I don't see anything else. Katie, nothing coming up on your end?
There's one more. Did you see that one? That was the first one I, that was actually posted. I can read it if you don't see it.
Actually, uh. Oh, okay. Thank you for everything you're doing in our community. Our west side neighbors would really be appreciative some, whoops, sorry. All right, hold on, okay. We really need this stress removed for better safety. Oh, the four-way stop. Appreciate some strong movement for the four-way stop on Vanderhoff and Congo. We really need this stress removed for better safety. We have many dozen neighbors that speak the same language. Thank you in advance to make a simple safety decision we really need. All right. And that would John Knott and his neighbors. Okay, Paul, I'll throw that one at you, I guess.
Well, we've talked about that. We've looked at it. We've done a traffic study there, so I think it's gonna be something that we're gonna have to because you can't get all the way through now on Congo, it's arguable whether you need that four-way right at this point. And, and, you know, from the, you know, from the criteria that normally they use in traffic, you know, highway traffic safety. Fortunately, we haven't had problems up there. But I, I think that that's an intersection we'll look hard at for a four-way as soon as we get Congo opened again.
All right, thank you. That should do it then, huh, Katie?
That's all I see.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move into our legislation this evening. Again, we have six first readings, no second. Or one second, no third or pending. Go to resolution number twenty-one dash R dash seventeen.
A resolution approving and adopting the two thousand twenty-one annual operating appropriation budget for the general fund and all other funds for the city of New Franklin and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R seventeen.
Second.
We have a first and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R seventeen.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Thank you. Move to resolution number twenty-one dash R dash eighteen, Kelly.
Resolution to authorize approval of a proposal from Southeast Security for security measures at the New Franklin Fire, Police and Administration Buildings and the South Summit Dispatch Center and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R eighteen.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. We'll move to resolution number.
We need, we need to adopt.
Yeah, that was, I was looking for somebody to go ahead and we gotta mostly usually do that. I gotta, as you heard or text, I had to take care.
We, we move to adopt resolution twenty-one R eighteen.
Second.
Yeah, Jimmy, you never let it go that long. I got some stuff going on and I gotta kind of take care of my phone a little bit. That doesn't concern the city, but I'm like waiting and it's like Jim's usually on it, so it must pass. Okay, I'm sorry. My undivided attention. Can I, we got a first, like, can I get a roll call, please?
We need a second.
Do, I think we had a sec.
It was second.
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. We will now move on to resolution number twenty-one dash R dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Atlantic Emergency Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of a Pierce enforcer as amended to Pierce Sabre pumper truck for the fire department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R nineteen as amended.
Second.
Second.
First, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R nineteen as amended.
Second.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Thank you. We'll move to resolution twenty-one dash R dash twenty. Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Tim Lally Chevrolet Incorporated for a two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet Tahoe four-by-four vehicle for the fire department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee and we move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R twenty.
Second.
Yeah, first, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, we move to adopt resolution twenty-one R twenty.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. We'll move to resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-one.
A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds towards New Franklin's share of the cost for the formation and operation of the South Summit Dispatch Center by the South Summit Council of Governments and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-one R twenty-one.
First, second, roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes. We move to adopt resolution twenty-one R twenty-one.
Second.
We had a first and second. Any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
All right, again, that passes six to zero. Thank you. As far as our second reading ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash zero one, we're gonna take time on that. We have no third readings or pending legislation. Move into mayor's report.
None.
None?
I'm gonna bye-bye my oath.
You're gonna go with that, Paul?
I'm gonna go with that.
All righty. You sure? All right, how about Susan? Anything for the finance?
That we are going to be presently working on our GAAP financial statement for twenty twenty and then immediately following that, we'll be working on our audit. So that's kind of what, besides the normal, normal stuff, that's kind of what's going on in finance right now. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Susan. How about old business?
David, I think this might be old business. It might be new, but I do have a question for Susan. Susan, for people that are working from home right now, a lot of our people in New Franklin pay their city tax to the city where they currently work. How is that going to impact us, since you're gonna be working from home? Would New Franklin receive it? Would Rita be collecting that?
From what, from what I have heard from Rita, there is some specific government stipulations that though, because even though they were working remotely from home, that's not going to impact their, the regular entity that they would pay their income tax to.
How about if it continues? If it becomes a permanent at home, would, would they rethink it then?
Yes, if it were outside the pandemic, they would definitely rethink it at that point, but under these conditions, that's what I've been told.
Okay, thank you.
No, this isn't part of my report.
No, no, that, that's it. No, okay, go ahead, Paul.
Well, no, just quickly, that's a hot button item right now and they're debating that down there in the Ohio Senate right now. And they had hearings earlier this week and right now there's.
It can go either way, Paul.
Oh, no question. I, you know, it, so we will, time will tell. It's the kind of thing if you know, if the bill that's on the floor passes, then you'll pay where you work at home. That would be a windfall for New Franklin.
Yes, it would really help.
That is, it's, it would be a death knell for some cities, so I don't know how that's gonna play out.
But it would only be fair. I mean, if you're not traveling anywhere, not using anybody and you're working in our community, then that's, you know, I don't see where it'd be unfair. You know.
Well, the people pay it already, David, and that's, that's the thing. They have to pay it. I just wondered about it.
Yeah, so you just pay it where, I mean, if you're gonna be working from home and that's your, you know, so anyhow.
Oh, well, sure, that's, that's the way it sounds. You know, I, ideally, that's the way it should work. But you have, you have these cities that are built on office buildings and now these office buildings might be closing down and, and cities could be losing seventy-five percent of their revenue. It, it, it could be, as, as the mayor said, a death knell. It, it could be a real challenge for a lot of communities. And unfortunately, we don't have those office buildings that, you know, would have a big effect on, on us, but some other communities.
It could be.
Scary.
Correct.
Yes.
So, all right, any other old business?
I, I just want to mention, I'm sorry, Judy, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll wait for you.
I, I just want to mention, thank you to Katie for the ordinances. That, that was awesome. And the, the water, as, as I was heading, my wife and I were heading to an establishment on Coleman this afternoon. We were incredibly, incredibly jealous of seeing the water lines and knowing that we won't have them at our place. But that just, that's just so awesome to see down there, so I just want to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. I want to say a thank you to Katie, too. She helped out some residents in the community went above and beyond and I appreciated that very much. And also, I want to remind people that they can donate to food pantries and there's still a lot of people in our community that use those.
All right, thank you. Any other old business?
I'm, I'm up.
All right, go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, any updates on getting, replacing some of our signs throughout the city? You know, children is slow and that we've talked about a couple months ago.
Yeah, I, I mean, I took this oath, so I can't lie. You know, I have, I have not moved on. I haven't moved on that, Mr. Cotts. I'm sorry. I, I have not, but we'll, we'll revisit that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, Paul, you probably haven't had nothing else to do, so I'm a little disappointed on that, but that's okay. No, you're doing a great job. That was a joke. All right, any other old business?
Real quick, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, do we have any updates on possible Easter egg hunt at the Tudor House this year?
We do, and since you said the words Tudor House, I'll have, we, we hope to have that agreement by the end of next week and we'll let it, which will give us plenty of time to look at it. But it's gonna be very favorable and everything that happens out there now will continue to happen out there. We have some questions about the Uker. The Uker will stay. We have the questions about some community groups that use the house for meetings. That will continue. There'll be no, nothing will change in that regard. The Easter egg hunt, as we're advised right now, is going to be a drive-through Easter egg hunt. And it's going to be, I don't, they haven't announced it. It's not our event, but we're hosting. Uh, and uh, it's going to be, I don't, they haven't announced it. It's not our event, but we're hosting it there at the Tudor House. Uh, and it would be on Saturday, April the third. Uh, and uh roughly in the mid-morning hours. So that's, that's what we've been told by the Kiwanis. They're in the planning stages and uh, but they haven't announced it yet, so neither have we.
Right, thank you. Any other old business? How about new business? No new business? All right, we'll go to our public questions and answers. All that's coming up for me is our former mail, Mayor Al Bolce is watching. Anything else on your end?
I did one um about the mayor raise. Minutes ago, I can read it if you don't see it.
I don't, I just the one about how is the mayor's salary lineup with other cities, that one, or is there another one?
There's another one.
All right, well, that one didn't come up for me.
Okay, want me to read it for you?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Because it seems like a big raise for the mayor, but the city has not given a sitting mayor a raise, as far as I could tell, since becoming a city. If the city would have been given yearly raises of one to three percent, then I would guess it would be higher than what's being asked. As a taxpaying resident of New Franklin, I support the raise of the mayor.
All right, thank you. I, that one, I do not see that one, so anyhow, thank you. Any other ones? All right, Paul, executive sessions?
Nope.
All right, great. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I just have it. Thank you. That was a nice meeting. Our next meeting will be. Apparently, I didn't get all my, all my other stuff, so what's the first one? Did I gotta look at my thing?
April seventh.
Seven.
April seventh, wow, we got a little time before that one, so.
Three weeks.
Well, good seeing everybody. Nice meeting. Again, Paul, thanks for the state of the city. That was awesome. And uh, good to see everybody and we'll talk to you all soon.